Gloria Gonzalez Delucchia?
Here.
Anna Smith?
Here.
Christine Mauer?
Here.
Trish Bodie?
Here.
Shade Faschakun?
Here.
Francesca Romans?
Here.
Paul Gauthier?
Here.
It is 6:15 PM and with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. We're going to start with our favorite part, our student pledges, and it's my pleasure to introduce two pledge leaders tonight, Shepard Duncan and Ben Hedegor from the Weebelows Two Den of Cub Scout Pack 2008. 2008, sorry about that, they just told me that, they're very proud of their den and their pack. Shepard and Ben will be 5th grade students at Westside Elementary School this fall. Pack 2008 has approximately 30 active scouts from kindergarten through 5th grade and draws primarily from Baghdad, Knowles, and Westside Elementary Schools in LISD. Pack 2008 is led by Scout Master Robert Hedegor and Weebelows Two Den is led by Lauren Duncan. The pack meets weekly during the school, both at the den and pack levels, to learn about citizenship, teamwork, responsibility, and leadership while developing friendships and having fun. The Scouts of 2008 hold annual Rain Gutter Regatta and Pinewood Derby events and have camped out in places like Ink's Lake, Portinellas Falls, the Cameron Park Zoo, and even the USS Lexington. Very, very cool. Thank you Ben and Shepard and thank you parents and leaders for taking time out of your summer break to lead us in the pledges tonight. Y'all can come on up.
Please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
If you'll join me in a moment of silence, please.
Thank you.
Let's give a round of applause to Ben and Shepard. Yay! Thank you and thank your moms and your dads and your grandmas and grandpas for coming over with you tonight. We appreciate it, thank you. Alright, next we're going to move over to our video recognitions. We're going to watch a video highlighting some of the outstanding things happening here in Leander ISD.
The temperature is soaring and one LISD is on a hot streak. Let's take a look at the recent accomplishments of our students and staff. The Ross High School baseball team took us on a wild ride to the state playoffs. The Raiders made it to the semifinals in state competition and played a nail-biter of a game. The team ended the season with a record 34 wins. Thirteen seniors have signed to play college ball and one more thing, Raiders baseball coach Chad Crempon earned his 500th career win. Wow, way to go Raiders, what a grand slam of a year. We're going to pop-up fly over to the science fair. Two of our high school students placed at the Texas Science and Engineering Fair. Metapaluru from Vista Ridge High School placed 3rd in the biochemistry category, exploring methamphetamine's effects along with stimulants and their connection to cavernous malformation symptoms. Likewise in 3rd, Vandergrift's Samuel Lee placed in the Earth and Environmental category. His project focused on predicting seasonal Atlantic hurricane activity while utilizing climatic patterns and a machine learning approach. A heavy shower of compliments to these two. Student teams around the world came together for this year's Destination Imagination Global Finals. These competitions allow students to compete in events that showcase their creativity and critical thinking. Seven Leander ISD teams showed up ready to take on the challenge. In the Fine Arts category, heads up, Team 7-Up from Parkside Elementary placed 4th, while Team Banana Split from Canyon Ridge Middle School placed 9th. In the Service Learning category, Cedar Park High School's team, Off Topic, took home 7th place, while the Steiner Ranch Elementary Creative Minds notched 10th place. The Stallions continued to stampede the competition as the Space Ninjas earned an 8th place finish in the Scientific category. Two teams from Vandergrift High School also qualified for globals but did not attend due to graduation. Congratulations on a job well done. As we close out the school year filled with triumph and tribulation, we will never grow weary of celebrating our amazing students and staff and the support from parents and the community. Thank you for your commitment to success because there's no place like LISD.
Thank you for that video. Next, we're going to move to our Citizen Comments portion of the agenda. And before I invite the first speaker to the podium, we'll watch a short introductory video.
Hello, my name is Kellen.
And my name is Mason.
We're both 5th graders at Steiner Ranch Elementary. The District and the Board of Trustees are the local government body responsible for serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren, like me and my friends here in Leander Independent School District. Their mission is to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The Board is now taking up the Citizens Comment Agenda item. This is dedicated time during this meeting to hear from the whole community and the entire LISD family. The District believes the Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment.
To our speakers, before you speak, we hope you have read guidelines and specified in Board Operating Procedures and BED Local. The Board wants to hear from everyone. Please be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information. Remember that schoolchildren of all ages participate in board meetings, either by watching them online or you might even see some of us in the audience. Still remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the Board. You can send them an email, come to the Board Cafe, or just tell them that you would like to chat sometime. When the Board President calls your number, remember, watch the timer and focus on your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
Hello, my name is Kellen.
Very cute. Okay, next we're going to start with our Speaker 1, which is an LISD student.
Today, I'd like to thank the School Board, the District, and staff for all of its work to ensure that students are able to participate in their own education, in the development of school policies, and in public meetings like this, where policies are advocated for and decided. Student voice matters. Candidly, there has been a marked improvement since I first came to visit the Board as a high school freshman 2 and 1/2 years ago. Then, back then, the bad behavior of many in the meetings was a problem for others. If speakers are cherry-picking out of context from books just to embarrass kids or to misrepresent those books, that's bad. When speakers claim free speech so they can force these passages on kids, it doesn't help their argument. It's not what the District is doing in enabling parents to choose whether their kids can read a book. This was a blocker for kids and their families coming. Many parents felt it was unsafe to bring their kids. Some parents who saw the bad behavior firsthand even advised other parents not to bring their kids under any circumstances. But how can we form effective school policy if the people most affected, students, can't participate at all? What if we are driven out? We are citizens too. Since then, the Board and the District instituted new guidance that has made a big difference and behavior has improved. Students have come and advocated for policies they believe in, and other students and the District have benefited. However, nothing is guaranteed. I think it is on the students and the families of this District to ensure that students are able to participate in improving education. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you. Next, Speaker #2, which is a non-LISD resident. Okay, we'll move to Speaker #3, which is also a non-LISD resident. Okay, we're going to move to Speaker #4, resident of Leander ISD. Okay, Speaker #5, which is a non-LISD resident. Okay, we're going to move to Speaker #3, which is also a non-LISD resident. Okay, we're going to move to Speaker #4, resident of Leander ISD. Okay, Speaker #5, which is a non-LISD resident. Okay, Speaker #5, which is a non-LISD resident. Thank you for that video. Next, we're going to move to our Citizen Comments portion of the agenda. And before I invite the first speaker to the podium, we'll watch a short introductory video.
Hello, my name is Kellen.
And my name is Mason.
We're both 5th graders at Steiner Ranch Elementary. The District and the Board of Trustees are the local government body responsible for serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren, like me and my friends here in Leander Independent School District. Their mission is to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The Board is now taking up the Citizens Comment Agenda item. This is dedicated time during this meeting to hear from the whole community and the entire LISD family. The District believes the Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment.
To our speakers, before you speak, we hope you have read guidelines and specified in Board Operating Procedures and BED Local. The Board wants to hear from everyone. Please be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information. Remember that schoolchildren of all ages participate in board meetings, either by watching them online or you might even see some of us in the audience. Still remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the Board. You can send them an email, come to the Board Cafe, or just tell them that you would like to chat sometime. When the Board President calls your number, remember, watch the timer and focus on your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
Hello, my name is Kellen.
Very cute. Okay, next we're going to start with our Speaker 1, which is an LISD student.
Today, I'd like to thank the School Board, the District, and staff for all of its work to ensure that students are able to participate in their own education, in the development of school policies, and in public meetings like this, where policies are advocated for and decided. Student voice matters. Candidly, there has been a marked improvement since I first came to visit the Board as a high school freshman 2 and 1/2 years ago. Then, back then, the bad behavior of many in the meetings was a problem for others. If speakers are cherry-picking out of context from books just to embarrass kids or to misrepresent those books, that's bad. When speakers claim free speech so they can force these passages on kids, it doesn't help their argument. It's not what the District is doing in enabling parents to choose whether their kids can read a book. This was a blocker for kids and their families coming. Many parents felt it was unsafe to bring their kids. Some parents who saw the bad behavior firsthand even advised other parents not to bring their kids under any circumstances. But how can we form effective school policy if the people most affected, students, can't participate at all? What if we are driven out? We are citizens too. Since then, the Board and the District instituted new guidance that has made a big difference and behavior has improved. Students have come and advocated for policies they believe in, and other students and the District have benefited. However, nothing is guaranteed. I think it is on the students and the families of this District to ensure that students are able to participate in improving education. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you. Next, Speaker #2, which is a non-LISD resident. Okay, we'll move to Speaker #3, which is also a non-LISD resident. Okay, we're going to move to Speaker #4, resident of Leander ISD. Okay. Speaker #5, which is a non-LISD resident.
Good afternoon, good evening, Trustees and School Board. I'm a pastor and, you know, it's come to my attention, there's a lot of inappropriate books in your school district. And I've given you a handout, a memo from our attorneys that's fighting this all over Texas, especially here in Leander. But as a man of faith, as a community leader, as a father, you know, these books have no business in our schools. We want everyone here to go back to the basics, the ABCs of schools. Indoctrination, showing our kids pornography, I mean, I don't know how we got to this level in schools. So as a man of God, you know, we got to hold you guys accountable, what are you teaching our kids? And please follow these guidelines, please follow the law of the land, because if I read some of this content, it makes you sick. And I've read some of these books and I've heard so many awful stories that's happening in the classrooms here at Leander, and I don't know how we got here. So I am imploring to you guys to please follow your guidelines, follow the laws. And not only that, Matthew 18 says, "If you cause any little child to sin, it is better for you to grab a millstone and wrap it around your neck and throw yourself off to the deep ends." This is dangerous and please do the right thing for our community. God bless you.
Speaker #6, parent or guardian of Leander ISD student?
Good evening, Trustees. I'm here at this last meeting of the technical year to remind you that as a parent and a community member, I firmly disagree with a lot of what you are allowing to be exposed to my children. And ultimately, they are my responsibility, not yours. I want to remind you about freedoms that we experience in this country. Freedoms of religion, freedom of expression. I also, as you know, am a man of God, I take that very, very seriously. But my freedom of that religion stops at everybody else's door. Your freedom to express these things to children stops at the parents who don't agree with them. That's my right, that's my privilege. I'm here to say once again, I don't agree, I do not want my children exposed to this. One last point. Many of us in the community elected Trustee Gauthier to represent us. Your efforts in recent weeks to restrict him is basically another sign of you're saying to us, you don't matter. What you want doesn't matter. Remember your oath, remember the oath you took to support and defend the Constitution and all of the people, not just what you want. Thank you.
Speaker #7, parent or guardian?
Hello? Yeah, I want to reiterate what the pastor said because I've submitted 19 reconsiderations for pornography in March and have yet to have them reviewed. They were postponed until sometime during the fall. Y'all have a responsibility to remove that content. But tonight, I want to talk about the disaster that this Board is, and I don't know if it's from incompetence or malice, but the six of you deserve to be recalled. It was blatantly obvious that Trustee Mauer did not suddenly come up with the language presented at the May 24th meeting to edit Policy BE with bogus limitations placed on Trustee Gauthier. The motion was to edit Policy BE. I'm assuming that not one of you is aware that Policy BE pertains to board meetings. Language pertaining to board member visits is actually located on Policy BBE. Aside from your attempts to cheat and skirt Toma, you all voted to edit the wrong policy. Additionally, according to Policy BF, amendments to policy can only be considered when board members have had advance written notice of the proposed change. Paul pointed this out and was erroneously advised by the Board Attorney. Also want to point out that on Twitter, it was pointed out that instantiating unlawful conduct into local policy which applies to only one elected trustee, not otherwise defined as criminal trespass in the Texas Penal Code, is a violation of the Equal Protection Clause in his 14th Amendment.
Speaker #7? Speaker #8, parent or guardian?
Thank you to the Board, the school teachers, the school district employees. I just, we come from a Christian family. When I hear self-professed Christians come into this meeting and start forcing what they call pornography on kids, that kind of bothers me. It tells me that they aren't actually respectful of other parents, they aren't respectful of kids, they aren't respectful of equal rights, and they aren't respectful of process, including decorum. I'm really glad that some of the speakers tonight decided not to speak or decided they weren't going to go through with what they had planned to do. They shouldn't have to be reminded to be good to other people. They shouldn't expect special treatment. As a parent, you can make it so that your kid can't read a book and that's just fine. But you're trying to make it so other kids can't read books that are good for them. And when you cherry-pick and try to embarrass kids and misrepresent material, that goes directly against academic achievement and a welcoming culture for all the students. So I think that we need to really think about who our neighbors are, and our neighbors include people who aren't of the same religion, aren't necessarily even have a religion, but they deserve an education that everyone else gets. And the problem is that some parents, some pastors preach a narrow form of the truth that doesn't allow all of us to be educated. Thank you for protecting our freedoms.
Thank you, Speaker #8. Speaker #9, resident of Leander ISD.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your service, thank you for your leadership, thank you for what you go through to serve our kids. I was raised Christian Baptist. It upsets me to no end for people to get up here and try and use the Bible to bash other people. There is not porn in our schools. If there were, Ken Paxton, boy, let me tell you, he'd be up here in a heartbeat. Our children are safe. Part of what we need to do though is to remind people, they can work with religion and spirituality in their homes, off of school grounds, all that time that the family has with those kids. That's when they can do their spirituality and faith. Mr. Gauthier, doesn't seem to feel like rules and policies and procedures apply to him. When we get a chance, we're going to show him that he's wrong. But in the meantime, the Board needs to protect our kids and our parents from somebody that tries to follow people into the parking lots and harass them. Again, I appreciate your service, I pray for you, I thank you for everything that you do. Happy June Pride Month, and for kids that are different, it'll get better. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker #9. That concludes our Citizen Comments. I do want to add that this evening, we did have individuals from all over the state of Texas signed up to present comments on the subject of books. And just want to share for those of you that are not from our community, I thought it'd be helpful to share our policy. For all library book concerns, the Leander ISD Board of Trustees is committed to upholding Policy EF, which allows a parent or guardian of a current LISD student, any Leander ISD employee, any individual, also, I'm sorry, any Leander ISD student and any individual currently residing within Leander ISD boundaries to submit a formal reconsideration for any book that they are concerned about. Per the policy guiding principles, a parent's ability to exercise control over reading, listening, or viewing matter extends only to his or her own child. Okay, next on the agenda is the public hearing on the 2024-2025 proposed budget and tax rate. Hello, Dr. Pete, it's all you.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Gearing. Is that better?
Alright.
Okay, it's in my personal space. Alright, tonight we conclude a seven-month process and have our public hearing on the 2024-2025 budget. We'll walk you through this. We'll walk you through this, through the process and our presentation, and then there will be opportunities for comment later in the evening. Well, while we wait for that, we'll go ahead and just, I do have a couple of comments I was going to intertwine, and I'll, I'll jump ahead of those. But first and foremost, I do want to thank the board, the chiefs, special education and HR departments, our other departments throughout the district, as well as our financial services team, as we compile all this information and to bring forth the budget this evening. Are we good? All right. I have faith in you, Daniel. We're good. All right, so this process began in December. I'll kind of go through the highlights. I know you're familiar with it. We've had this presentation and this slide a couple of times in the spring, but we began in, like I said, we began in December. We had the planning calendar in January. We kind of get the assumptions and the, and the parameters. Again, we made a few changes. February, we came back. We got our feedback from our stakeholders in our departments and campuses, did a budget planning update for the Board of Trustees. March, we had our, all the campus requests were due, reconciliation of our campus and our department budget request. We had non-recurring requests, recurring requests, early release of physicians. We followed up in April with more early release of physicians. We got our certified estimated values from both, our, both of our, our counties. And then we had a presentation of the compensation plan. The board approved the compensation plan at the next meeting in May, which was a two and a half percent pay increase for all employee groups from midpoint. And then earlier this month, in June, on June 6th board meeting, we talked about the proposed budget. And then tonight, we are having our notice of public meeting to discuss the proposed budget of the public hearing. This, sorry, I got ahead. Public hearing is tonight. We did have the ad in the paper, legal notice on June 13th on the Hill Country News. And then a later agenda item later tonight is to adopt the 2024-2025 budget. And our budget, although we didn't have a, a theme as far as the slide goes, we did continue this theme that we had prior year with reclaim and retain and recruit. And then our whole budget process was geared toward our guiding documents, particularly with the emphasis on the students when they graduate with Portrait of a Graduate. The board is required to adopt the three main funds, the general fund, the debt service fund, and the child nutrition fund. So we'll go through each of those funds. The parameters that we used were enrollment of forty-three thousand, three hundred and sixteen, a little over thirteen hundred of those students were pre-K, in pre-K three. We are funded at half a day on those students. Our property values came in at seven point four six percent. We had assumed or estimated at seven percent. We use a tax collection rate at ninety-nine percent. We are right on, on target with what we normally do, or our normal collection rate. Our M and O tax rate will be decreasing a little over two cents. Our INS rate will remain constant at thirty-three cents. And our total tax rate will be, as of the formulas right now, a dollar eight six nine, which is a two point one eight cent decrease, total tax rate. So we are, the majority of our tax base is homes. Local property taxes provide the bulk of our funds. Seventy-three percent of our budget comes from local tax collections, twenty-two percent from state funding, one percent from federal funds, and then four percent from other sources. Our breakdown by function, sixty-three percent of our budget is dedicated to instruction. And that is what we call function eleven. That is our teacher salaries, our aid salaries, benefits, et cetera. Nine percent of our budget is for maintenance and operations. Our student instructional support, consisting of student support services and instructional support, make up fourteen percent of our budget. So the bulk of the vast majority of our, our budget is instruction. And that instruction does not include three percent for transportation. That does include the three percent for fine arts and extracurricular activities and athletics. So the bulk of the money in our budget is geared toward our students. All right, eighty-seven percent of our budget is payroll. As you can imagine, we are a service industry business. We, the bulk of our, our, is the bulk of our cost of personnel. So eighty-seven percent of our budget is payroll, and this is when we calculate it, when we take out recapture and we don't include transfers. If we were to include recapture and transfers, that would be eighty-five percent of the budget. Just depends on which way you look at it. So just wanted to clarify that point, just make sure we clarify that point. Ten percent of our budget is non-payroll, non-utilities. So the vast majority is between payroll, utilities, that's ninety percent of our budget. For comparison, looking at twenty-two, twenty-three actual, as we enter the year, the twenty-three, twenty-four amended in our projected actual, and then the twenty-four, twenty-five projected budget. Our revenues are up about nine million dollars from the prior year. Our recapture payment is up about two million dollars from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. For our total expenses and transfers out, about thirteen, thirteen million, sorry, five million dollars less. I'm reading the wrong line. Sorry about that. I was like, that doesn't make sense. Twenty-one million more than the, than the previous year. So a lot of that Senate Bill Two benefited us, as well as having the recapture remain constant, as opposed to what it was in twenty-two, twenty-three. Our debt service budget, this is the funds that are recommending maintaining the same rate it's been for the last couple of years at thirty-three cents. We are planning that this revenue, along with the state hold harmless monies that coming from Senate Bill Two, and the state decreased, or increased the homestead exemption by from forty thousand to a hundred thousand, that decreased the amount of revenue districts bring in. So the state is holding us, districts harmless, as long as they had a bond election passed prior to Senate Bill Two taking effect, which was September one of two thousand twenty-three. We have this thirty-three cents will bring us enough to make our, our bond payment for this year. We have just over twenty million dollars in that will be either used to defees bond, or we are planning to do a, one more bond sale. We do three bond sales with the, with the two thousand twenty-three bond. If we do that bond sale early enough, and we do have a payment in that fiscal year, that will be used for that payment. If not, we will defees that debt, and then when we do the bond payment, the first payment would be in the next, next fiscal year. So we are in a very, a very good position to maintain the promise that the board has made to the taxpayers and the administration to keep it at thirty-three cents with that two thousand twenty-three bond. The next fund is our child nutrition services budget. We have total revenues of just under fourteen and a half million, total expenditures of fifteen point seven million, for a budgeted deficit of one point three million. And do want to clarify, it was two point four million of that budget is capital outlay, which is part of the TEA-approved plan to do spend down the, the fund balance. So as you can see, the fund balance is over thirteen and a half million. So by TDA, we are only, districts are only allowed to have about three months operating expenses, fund balance for food service. So when it goes above that, you have to follow the plan with the, with TDA to spend down that fund balance. So without having to have that spend down, we would have had about a million dollar revenue exceeding the expenditures by about a million. But as part of that spend down process, it's by showing the budget as one point three deficit. Our tax information, as you look at our, our tax rate history, looking back, starting in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, we were a little over a dollar forty. We hit about the dollar mid-forty, dollar forty-five range, dollar forty-eight range for a good number of a couple of years there. And then two thousand nineteen, House Bill Three came into effect, the state of Texas. Legislature over the last couple of sessions has bought down the tax rate. So as you see, our M and O tax rate has decreased. That does not mean that our revenues have increased. Means our, our local revenues actually have decreased. State funding has covered that, but it's not any new additional funding to the district. So we are currently looking at tax rate, total tax rate this next year of a dollar eight six nine. That's a two point one eight cents decrease over the current fiscal year we are in now. We will submit all of our information to TEA at the end of July. They will verify our calculations for our maximum compressed rate. And once that is verified, then we will come to you in August to adopt the tax rate. Just to give you a history, that it's gone down a twenty-five point three percent total tax rate since two thousand ten, eleven. So just looking at our tax rate comparison, and just clarify that that's down twenty-five point three percent, and that's with Vader that we held in, in the fall of twenty-two, which added, we were able to offset, decrease our debt service, but also increase our M and O. So our tax rate comparison, if you look at from twenty-two to twenty-three to twenty-four, our MCR has gone, our maximum compressed rate has gone from just over eighty cents to just over sixty-one cents. We have maximized the gold pennies. We have six of the copper pennies. So we've gone from nine, ninety-four point four six cents down to seventy-five point six nine. We decreased our INS rate in twenty-two, maintained at thirty-three cents in twenty-three, twenty-four, and are keeping the same rate for twenty-four, twenty-five, for a total tax rate of a dollar eight six nine, for a decrease of two point one eight cents, as Officer mentioned on the previous slide. And that concludes the, the presentation for the, the three funds and for the board, for the public hearing.
The board will now move to the citizen comments for the public hearing on the twenty-two four, twenty-five proposed budget and tax rate. And we invite those who signed up to comment on this public hearing to come forward when your number is called. As a reminder, the board is restricted in the ways we can interact with you during this portion of the meeting, per our board operating procedures and policy BED local. Each speaker has one and a half minutes to address the Board of Trustees, and you will hear a chime when your time is up. Please conclude your comments when you hear this chime. Speaker number one. Speaker number one, parent or guardian of LISD.
First, I want to thank you for all the work that went into preparing this budget. I'm under no illusions. You've got to approve this by the end, by this weekend in order to go forward with the district. I just want to quickly remind you, though, that what we're approving in this budget is, or adopting in this budget, is money that belongs to either people. And a large percentage of this budget, sixty-three percent of it, deals with instructional materials, to which a lot of us have concerns about. If that doesn't concern you, there's something wrong. Brief, a brief comment about the second discussion of the tax rate. That's once again, a very, a very touchy issue with me as a veteran and a patriot. Taxation is our money, our, our desires being put forward in these taxes. They should represent our desires as well. There's a very, very famous term, you all know it, taxation without representation is tyranny. These are all things that should concern you. As you adopt, again, I know you got, you got to adopt in order to go forward, but you cannot continue to ignore the other concerns that so many of us bring and just say, well, you guys are the bad guys. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker number one. Speaker number two, parent or guardian? Speaker number three, resident of Leander ISD.
Thank you. Huge thanks to the staff for all the work that goes into this. Huge thanks to all of you. When I'm not here, I'm usually watching remotely. These, this budget information has been being shared periodically throughout the meetings. So none of this should come as a surprise. I appreciate that you're being very careful with our tax dollars. I appreciate that you're keeping our tax rate and our taxes low. I appreciate that you're using our money wisely to best educate our kids. That's what it's about. Not about the parents, not about us old folks. It's about the kids, and they are what is going to make the future bright for us. It disturbs me that Texas, the state of Texas, the legislature of Texas, has not done more to fund public education in Texas. We are, I thought I saw a study saying that we're like forty-first in the country on funding for public education. And as much as Texas is growing, we can afford, what is it? We've got a thirty-two, thirty-three billion budget surplus. But thank you all. And again, anyone, any of the kids, if you're different, tomorrow's going to be better. It's going to be great. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker number three. Now we're going to move to our discussion on the public hearing of the twenty-two four, twenty-five budget and tax rate. Board members, do you have any questions or comments?
So we're going to have more discussion, Madam President, on the budget later in our board meeting, correct? That is an agenda item. So, so Pete, let me just ask you, I'll, I'll have to save my questions for later. There's just one I want to make sure I'm, I'm correct on. Put that noodle aside, which is that the tax rate, when I'm looking at it, we've either stayed, maintained, or we've dropped. We stayed, maintained, or we've dropped. This is part of the board's really good work and coordination with the community. I remember when we talked about Vader, and we said the whole point was, is we were putting some money into M and O, as the state is not doing that. We wanted to do that to help fund our teachers. And so I see that coordination of a lot of really good work in us holding our commitment to the taxpayers of our community. The other thing that I didn't see in here, and I just, I know you and I talked about on the phone, so I want to make sure, talking about taxpayer commitment, since we're adopting tax rate eventually, is that one of the commitments we made to, to our community is to reduce our cab budget down. And in our debt service, I didn't see a slide on it, or note on it. I might have missed it, but I know you and I talked about it. And that is one of the things we talked about with our community as well. So in transparency and making sure we're on schedule to also maintain that commitment that we made to taxpayers, are we still on schedule to reduce our cab portfolio debt?
Yes, we are still on schedule. We have one bond refunding that we could do today. I mean, we're eligible to do it today. It's a small refunding. Next August of twenty-five, so we can do it ninety days before, so May of, of twenty-five is when we have the very large refunding, with the vast majority of all that being cab debt. That will be the one that will, if we're not at twenty-five percent now, it'll get us even below twenty-five percent. So, and then we are debating on when we do all these. If we can wait for the bond sale till May, we'll do all three transactions at one time and maximize the economies of scale. If we do need monies for the bond prior to that, we'll, we'll do that bond sale, and we'll do the smaller refunding, and we'll do the later refunding later on. But we are on target with the plan that was submitted by PFM back in two thousand fifteen and adopted by the board. So all the things that we have, that have gone on in the last nine years, we are on target. And we, this is our last refunding piece that will refund the vast majority of that, any outstanding, outstanding cab debt that we have. And that will put us below the twenty-five or below a percent of our debt, where we were seventy-five percent back in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. So we are on target.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions, we're going to move on to our next item. And we are going to jump around a little, since we have guest presenters. So we're going to have a little order change and move over to item nine, C1, which is the discussion of early childhood center design charrette passes.
Madam President, board members, Dr. Gearing. We're excited to come to you tonight to bring the results of our design charrette for the early childhood center. Just to remind you in the public, the board did approve building the early childhood center in October of two thousand twenty-three at the recommendation of the Bond Oversight Committee. And so we're going to go through tonight as a team and talk through our process, and we'll let each one introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Casey Nicholson with O'Connell Robertson, part of the architectural team. I'm the project manager and been with the, with Jimmy and all of the other, and Erin as well throughout this whole process. So we're excited to get in front of you today.
All right. My name is Erin Garner. I'm the Director of Early Childhood, and my breathing exercises aren't working because I'm so excited that I just need to calm down so I can share with you all the amazing, amazing work that the design charrette has done to get us here today. You know, while I have the honor to represent early childhood and young children and families right now, I do want to introduce two people here with me tonight, and that is Sarah Walker, who is our Coordinator of Pre-K, and Erica Metcalf, who is our Coordinator of Early Childhood Special Ed. And it's very important to know that our vision, our goals, and all decisions as we move forward in early childhood is with all children in mind. So they're a very important part of this process.
One other person I want to introduce is Lori Black. She's our L S D Construction Project Manager, and she's been heavily involved with the team also in helping guide this process.
I wasn't going to forget her. Hi, Lori. All right. So, you know, they say that there are three main teachers in a child's life, and that is the family, the teachers, and the environment. And L I S D's commitment to high-quality learning environments is very evident in the beautiful facilities that we have and how we're always trying to improve. What's really special about tonight is it's the first time in the history of L I S D that we're actually designing a facility for threes and fours. So again, very exciting, right? I've been here since the late 1900s and so excited that we're doing this. So what's really special about the charrette process is that we get to bring together a lot of great minds and in a very short time decide what are the ingredients, what's the recipe that we've got to bring together to put together a concept for design for threes and fours, right? So that we can use now and that we could possibly use in the future if, again, the district sees that we may need another one. So you can see on this slide just some of, what were the educational specifications that we used? You know, our educational goals, both for early childhood and with the graduate profile in mind, right? To line those up, to align what we want our students to leave with. What are the functional needs of threes and fours and the professionals who work with threes and fours? What's the concept for design, right? To really look at what threes and fours need, and then finally with that map to success. But it didn't just start with the charrette. It started way back with L I S D Steering Committee work, such as the Long Range Planning Committee, who looked at facilities, who looked at the needs in the district to decide that an early childhood center would be what's best and what's next for our community. We have community input. We actually did a lot of research of our peers, and our peers being surrounding school districts, right? What could we learn from them, those who've already built early childhood centers? And also, we brought in virtual work, virtual tours from other places around the country so we could learn from our neighbors and we can learn from people who have forged ahead before us. We looked at best practices in early childhood, and we're really able to spell those out and share with one another. What our prior work has been, what's worked, and what we need more of. And then, of course, our teaching and learning plan. So how Gen Ed and Special Ed works together to create optimal learning environments for our little ones. And then again, from the previous slide, you saw the educational specifications, and so this has become our recipe for design so that we can create the best learning environments for our threes and fours. So originally, there were 75 invited participants to be part of the early childhood charrette from all different departments and including community members and families. The total went over 100 because not only did we have the in-person charrettes that were sometimes four hours long, right? Did a lot of heavy, amazing work, but there were also interviews with different groups, such as administration or teachers, facilities, transportation, you name it. They also had individual interviews so that we could really get down and focus on each area that plays into early childhood in the district and to really hear the needs from each department. So here's a little timeline of our planning process. You can see that in the top left, the learning context is we really sat down and said, what are we currently doing? What's really working for early childhood in Leander I S D? What do we want to see more of? And what will we maybe not need at an early childhood center? And then, of course, all the input, the learning from one another's, again, learning from one another in the district. And it was amazing to see how people from other departments who showed up and thought, I really don't know anything about early childhood, had amazing input and ideas to help us create the best possible learning environment. Like we said, we also learned from our peers, our neighboring school districts, districts as far off as San Antonio, and then around the country too. That included the virtual tours and our peer facilities. And then we got down to the learning organization. That's where we sat down and said, okay, what is it that we believe in? What is it that we know our young kids need? And what can that look like? And we'll see more of that as we go through these slides. Then gathering all the informations through surveys, again, the interviews, you name it, putting together all the information needed. Then we got down to, we got to build with blocks and really sit down in groups and, and build with blocks. What is this going to look like? What's going to work? And then, of course, our educational specifications. So we do have a project Wiki site that Molly Smith with Think Smart Plan, I believe, put together from the very beginning. So people who were involved in the charrette and those who were not can go on, you can go ahead and take your picture if you want to of this Q R code. And it lets you see the progression of the work, and we hope to continue adding the work and where we are in the design of the early childhood center so that we just didn't bring those 75 people together and they don't know what's happening next, right? So we hope to keep that updated for everybody. And then you can see there, it was just, it was a lot of work. You can see the block building, you can see that we had, you know, we had a time where we really just sat down and said, dream. We've never created a space like this before, so start with dreaming. And Dr. Gearing had to remind us quite a few times, don't limit ourselves, but just start with dreaming, and then we could get focused as we went. So there, there were hours of that, and it was all very worthwhile. So with those 75 people and people from all different departments, there were themes, and there were philosophies, and there were ways of learning that kept coming to the top. And after many hours of, like we said, interviews and working in groups and sharing information, there were about eight big visionary ideas that rose to the top over and over again that the group could decide on that. We're going to hang our hat on those, and that's going to be our guide for how we move forward. So those are the eight right there. And of course, over and over, it's play-based learning, right? What's very, what could be very different to some people is that it's not that we're scheduling time for play. All of the learning done with our threes and fours and some of our young fives is done through learning. Learning is through play, play is our learning, right? So it's not a scheduled time, it is the time. Playful interactions, structured play, intentional play, unstructured play, everything we do is play-based learning. And you can see in there some of the different phrases or ideas that were spelled out. The thinkery process, that really isn't so much about a partnership, though we've had one with the thinkery. It's more about what we've learned from them and how we move forward with this new information that we have. We know that our children need repetition over and over and over again, and we want to create environments where they can do that. The hands-on, process-oriented, child-directed, teacher-facilitated, you're going to see this over and over as we go through our slides. Nature-based play. Again, this is a little bit different than just when you hear outdoor learning. Most of the time when we hear outdoor learning is we're going to go outdoors sometimes and we're going to learn. A lot of the day could very well be spent outside, engaging with the natural environment. So the natural environment, the outside areas are probably going to look very different than anything we, we have right now. We want our kids to, to learn through natural elements and develop a sense of the world around them by what's outside. Social emotional learning, which is the cornerstone of all learning, and is, there's very specific and intentional teachings at this age. We wanted to set up, we wanted to be sure and set up safe environments, what we call yes environments. This building has to be a yes place, right? There's a lot of, kids touch things, kids do a lot of things, and we just want it to be a yes environment for them so that they can feel safe, so that they can learn all of the different skills that we want them to learn that not only help them with relationships later, but also help with learning. You can see that there's, there's different things on there. The family therapy, that's, that's a term that might be concerning for others, but it was just a term thrown out there. And it was about, how do we support? How are we going to support our families with young children that attend this school? And looking at all the different ways we could possibly do that. Student-centered, we know that threes and four-year-olds are egocentric learners, and instead of fighting that, we're going to leverage that and set up everything that we can do in our environment so that we can grow critical thinkers and that there's discovery and exploration and hands-on, and that everything is at their fingertips, at their access, if at all possible. This is, this is going to be the definition of student-led learning. Family support, you know, it's almost impossible to support young learners without really including their families. So while we're making the early childhood center specifically for threes and fours, we want them to be able to see themselves being successful in that building when they walk in. We also want their families to see themselves and their children as being successful when they walk in there. So really, when looking at the design, how, how are we going to be sure that the parents and families feel welcomed, right? How do we set up that they feel that they're welcome to come in more times during the day than maybe they, they are otherwise? How are we going to use multilingual tools? What are the parent resources we're going to have there? We could go on and on, but really, we know that the meaningful family and educator support system, the benefit, the beneficiary of that is the young child. And we've got to do everything we can to honor that triad of the parent, the child, and the teacher. Inclusive practices, again, it's one of the cornerstones of, of our philosophy and all the decisions that we make here in Leander I S D. And again, we want that setting to be a yes setting to all children, right? No matter what their abilities are or what your first language might be, you know, inclusive practices, that's inclusiveness is on many different levels, and we want to be able to address that as much as we can, again, through the environment. And socialization, we are still learning to make friends, right? We're learning to share, we're learning to take on another person's perception, right? So a lot of big learning going on here, and we've got to create spaces where children have the opportunity over and over again to interact with one another while learning. And then the teaching strategies, we spend a lot of time with teachers. We had some amazing early childhood teachers in this charrette who really shared over and over and even came in off-contract when we got down to more specifically the design to say, this is what we needed, these are our current barriers, this is what would be great to have, not only for great learning environments, but also for those P L Cs, that time with other experts, right? Other professionals, where they would be able to meet, how the environment needs to be set up so everybody can be learning together.
Okay, I will start on the program space. One thing I wanted to mention is Molly Smith with Think Smart Planning is who facilitated the process that we went through, just to remind and educate all the board. Molly has done our elementaries back in '06. She actually helped facilitate that process and then also our middle school and high school. So she's been throughout our entire level of learning, helping us facilitate this process. And she helped build the program space. Our goal was 600 kids, and you can see on the chart, we broke it down into the learning spaces, and you can see basically out of the 100, 100,000 square feet, 63,000 is in the learning spaces. So heavily spaces into the learning spaces. And one thing, when we discussed this back in October of '23, we talked about it's just not for pre-K, three and four. We're looking at the entire spectrum of first through, you know, one-year-olds up to the pre-K students entirety, and so we have included space for parents, teachers, as well as the Child Development Center in this program space that we've worked out. And then, of course, you can see the number of students we've allowed there. I don't know if you want to say anything else?
All right. And so I'm going to get into building on each of these activities. Again, I was grateful to be included in the process besides your community members and stakeholders. You also were thoughtful and invited the design team as well as the contractor. That's, even the contractor said, that's unheard of, you know? Just to be able to hear this firsthand was great. And this very much, you know, we started earlier this year, but May 28th and 29th, when we talk about a long couple of days, it was a long couple of days. And so it was very exciting, and nothing feels more like a child than giving everyone blocks to play with, right? And so we broke everyone up into groups and everyone got some blocks, and each of the blocks represented a different, each of the colors represent a different program area. And so you can see, these are small groups, there were six to eight people in each group, and this is, they're great designs. And so the, you notice a big variation here, the, the orange and the dark blue are the learning pods. That's again, the crux of the, the indoor space. And you notice there was a lot of thought being put into, that's all the handwriting around the site elements, like Molly, I'm sorry, Molly, Erin, like Erin said, not Molly, like Erin said, you know, there is a lot of space dedicated to outdoor learning and making sure that, you know, when you, when we talk about fingertip access, often we're talking about technology. For three and four-year-olds, we're talking to outdoors. And so making sure they have that access, that direct access to get out and engage. So, sorry, I try not to give everyone whiplash. Over two days, the 28th and the 20, the 28th, the groups came up with five different layouts, and then mysteriously overnight, a few of us slept, some didn't. We whittled those down to three, and it was a little bit merging of some concepts that we heard. You know, what I showed on the previous slides were pictures, but there were also sheets and sheets and sheets of notes. You know, each group did report out some of the key debates that we're having and the decisions they made. So we whittled those down to three, again, with that full group. So those full 75-plus people were engaged in giving impact. And of course, we asked them three questions, and they chose indoor courtyard for one, and they chose wings for in one, and they chose outward, outdoor views for one. And so it was not at all helpful, but we were able to have great discussions at the time to kind of tease out what we liked about each one. And then we came back the following week with two. They took the two that they had strongest and merged some elements of the third that they wanted to see. And over on the left, you'll notice interior courtyard is clearly named that way because they have a large interior courtyard and the learning pods. And then exterior views, we call it the fingers, they're splaying out, and a big driver there was looking out over. was looking out over, there's some trees there, not super big trees, but to a three-year-old, they're big trees. So getting direct access out to nature. And so there was a lot of discussion, do we like the inwardly focus? Do we like the external? And both of them really do solve it appropriately. Both of them would have been achievable. Ultimately, exterior views won out. We had created a rubric in the discussion, and it was very, you know, very fun, we voted. And so we talked a lot about how the pods are functioning, and when I get into the next layout, I'll show you exactly what's included in a learning pod. We also talked about how little kids are moving around that building. Walking around on three-year-old legs is really hard to get between spaces, or it takes time. And so being thoughtful about what would be the easiest day-to-day functionality, but then we also talk about after-hours access. You know, what's it like as a community member, especially if you're accessing that CDC, that Child Development Center at alternative hours? What's my path to into, around the building in still maintaining all our safety and security, et cetera? And then over on the right, I will give kudos, sorry, Jimmy, it is an all-female team here. So we did get the opportunity to spend eight or nine hours together, and a few guests came in and talked with us, and we really dove deep into each space, you know, not just, you know, these will continue. At this point, we're more focused on this adjacency next to this adjacency, and clarifying and still coming back to those things we heard from the community members, those key points that Erin so nicely walked us through, making sure we're still aligning with the vision or the goals that we had established. So here's the concept building plan, and I'll give you a shout-out, it's already changing slightly. And so what is consistent is we've got that nice arc going across the middle, that's the main street. You can see when you come in from the south with that arrow, it's going to feel like a school from the, it's going to, you know, when you walk in, you've got the admin area over to the right. Over to the left, it's currently labeled Media Center. It's about to become more community resource spaces with access to the Media Center. And you'll notice, for those that have been in your elementary school prototype and your other elementary schools, it's a little on the smaller side. That's because of those learning pods. And so those learning pods, literacy is on demand. We are not putting all of our books in the Media Center. We are putting them in the learning pods. And so each learning pod, that lighter blue area, will be broken up to have some literacy areas in there. It will have some center stations, some free play stations. Dining will also occur in the learning pods. I will give kudos to your food service and custodial staff for being open to this idea of letting little kids eat up here, and, you know, we'll treat the floors appropriately, et cetera. But, you know, a lot of feedback we heard is moving three- and four-year-olds around takes time, and what can we do to bring resources to them? They can still go to the gym, get their access there, but a big tenet of this is, you'll notice, sort of the light blue color brushes up to like a dark black line. Right outside is all their play areas. And so you've got, the building itself is, that building program you noticed is 100,000 square feet. Right now, we've got over 70,000 square feet of outdoor play area planned. And it's not, it's not traditional playgrounds. You're going to have some nature play, you're going to have some fun play areas, you're going to have some gardens, some, really, we don't have those developed yet, we're still working on those. But I think that when we talk about, you know, catering this to little kids, you are absolutely getting both of those spaces together. And before I leave the screen, you'll notice over to the right is the Child Development Center and the parents as teachers. The idea is they're going to have a secondary, still-secure entry vestibule, so we're maintaining that. They will also have their own unique play areas. And so that way, you know, distinct or after-hours, and, you know, the play equipment for a one-year-old looks different than a play equipment for a four-year-old. And so being mindful and thoughtful of that. And then, as we look on the site plan, you'll notice we're squeaking farther east on the site. We are at the southeast corner of St. Gabriel and Halsey. And so the entrance for the site will be off of Halsey. We're trying to push over to the east. It's a little bit quieter over there, and there's a little more denser foliage to be determined how much of the trees we can retain, because you'll notice that big cyan-blue area is that water detention. That's the lowest end of the site, and so that's an estimate of the size. We're not sure this is the final size. And that does allow you to retain quite a few acres over to the left side of the site for potential future development. We don't have a crystal ball, we don't know what that is, you guys are going to decide that, but there is going to be some available land here. You'll notice there's quite a bit more parking here than you would typically see at a school of this size. And that's to be mindful that we don't, we're not embedded in a neighborhood, we don't necessarily have those extra spaces on the street. We are building on a new site, and so there's substantially more spaces here to support those events, et cetera. To be determined in the future, Jimmy, if I'm correct, if the future development, we could talk about some sharing, if needed, for peak times, something like that. And so, again, the site development is still going underway, but you'll notice we are holding a lot of space for gardens, for turf play areas, tri-tracks, super fun. So if you're looking for a fun time, come on out, take a little ride. And then, again, two we designed, and those numbers over on the right are the quantities that we're thinking, that are planned to be included. So we're going to have some nature play, some tri-tracks, some free play, like the construction zone, think of things you've experienced with your kiddos or out in your community. You'll have some turf play or special event areas, et cetera. Those are some examples that the community liked. We're not saying those are the designs. I think what's a key element here is a learning porch. And so back on the floor plans, you'll notice we bushed right up against that glass. Each of those has some square footage outside to transition between in and out. And so that way, it's still, we're maintaining the safe and secure standards for the district, but you have that transition zone, it'll have a nice sink, trough sink, so you can wipe those kids down before you're going in and out. And again, the community members have been super helpful, the team leaders, you know, one of the things, we've got to put a restroom out there, we don't want those kids running back into the building unescorted to use facilities. So making tweaks like that are continuing to develop. And then last but not least is we are very much asking and thinking through ways to make the building and the site educational. These are items you're not necessarily seeing in a space program, we're not necessarily seeing, but there are great opportunities. You know, for example, on the left are some images of gathering rainwater collection. In the middle is an image, just simply coloring the pipes and putting a window in your corridor, you can count, you can point out sort of how those facilities are being used. We do have to have some hard surfaces on this campus. Is there an opportunity to build in a sun dial, or, you know, make those learning elements in gardens? So to be determined, you know, these are kind of teasers, these are images that the community liked and would like to consider as we move forward. And then to wrap us up, again, you guys, of course, are open for questions, just letting you know, we're on track here. We just issued the schematic design report today, and the design will be completed in early next year. We are being mindful of the lengthy site permit review process, and that has already begun with meetings and discussions to make sure that's not going to be the holdup. And we are looking to open up in the summer of 2026.
I have a question. First, I do want to say, I want to hit on this, the yes setting. I might be the only board member here who has had a child go through our early childhood program. Y'all know it changed his life, it's changed my life as a parent, so to see this come into action, but most importantly, to have a yes setting for parents. And I know Erin's back there because she, I had an experience where I was not at a yes setting as a parent with a child in early childhood. And that relationship between the parent and the school at that level really can make or break a parent. So I'm just so excited to see y'all put an emphasis on that yes setting and making it inclusive to all. That just makes me so incredibly happy. The other part to it is, you know, I've been through two early childhood centers, excuse me, early childhood hubs in this district, and each campus was fantastic, but each campus provided different opportunities for my child. And so to see that we're going to have a garden there, and to see they're going to have certain activities there that I got to dabble in both different campuses, but to have it at one campus, and that every child's going to have that opportunity, that just makes me so happy. This is why we do what we do. So my hard question is on slide 27. I live in this area, I drive down San Gabriel Parkway three times a day. I'm concerned that it's going to be another Raider Way. And I know that's not something that's on us, it's on the city. I'm curious to know what do those conversations look like? Because I will tell y'all, when I have to go pick up my child at Glenn, that back, that road from San Gabriel backs up all the way to the toll road. And it is a stop, it's a stop sign. And I have a backway, which I'm not going to tell everybody, but they will find that backway. I know our bus drivers use it because I see them. So I'm just wondering, what do those conversations look like? Is there something, when the K-6 meetings happening with our board president and superintendent, is that something that they can push pressure on? Because I just, I know we're going to do everything proactive to make this accessible to our parents. It's not us that I'm worried about, it's making sure that road gets ready for our parents and students.
One thing we will be doing is a traffic study on this, in cooperation with the city, of course. They've got to be a partner in this. San Gabriel is planning for expanding, but it's funding, who's going to fund the entire program? So that's going to be the question that we'll ought to be talking about. Once we do the traffic study to see the true impact, then it will sit there and identify what improvements need to be made and what the district's proportionate amount of that improvement will be. And we'll have to take care of that part of it, for sure.
Is there any timeframe when we will be doing the traffic study? Only because we know Heysel's opening next year, and we know that's going to change the whole game plan with that traffic.
We can start that, now that we're out of the design shred process, we'll start, and we have a somewhat a layout now, we'll kick the traffic impact study off.
And I will point out a nuance on here, maybe it wasn't, it's not clear to those that don't read site plans as often as I do, is the entrance and exit would primarily be off of Halsey. We are showing a connection as St. Gabriel, and that's right-turn exit only.
Right in, right out.
To be determined with the Transportation Department, is that only for buses? You know, the expectation is we are going to avoid adding to the St. Gabriel traffic
I also think there's something else right here, sorry, that I wanted to point out quickly, is that the CDC, the Child Development Center part, so the district is still exploring if, what that's going to look like if we're going to do that, right? So I just wanted to say that that area, if we decided that a Child Development Center is not what we needed or needed there, those classrooms are the same size as all the other classrooms. So that would still be a very usable area that could be used if we needed to grow. The other thing that we are looking at is that we do offer teen parents free childcare. Right now, our collaboration and our partnership with Head Start is very strong, however, Head Start has to serve the whole community, right? So we're just trying to be a little bit forward-thinking, and if the need grew, we have, we have choices now, right? On if we needed to move quickly on where and how we would offer. The other thing with the learning pods, it's hard to see when you look at that, but 120 kids could be in each of those pods, and we've, we really sat down to like, so we would, even how it is set up, when we talk about inclusive practices, it wouldn't be early childhood special ed on one side and pre-K on another. It'd be pre-K and early childhood special ed classrooms side-by-side, right? And even seeing how we could go back and forth between rooms. And then those collaboration spaces are pretty large, again, so we could spill out, I think now we call them neighborhood spaces, these will look a little bit different, but again, so we can continue that socialization and that learning everywhere. Wherever a child is, will be a learning space.
So, safety and security question on here, and this slide's a great one. As far as the outdoor learning space, will that be shaded? And then my other question as far as the safety and security is, we talked a lot about when we, when we built Glenn, I remember the great collaboration spaces that we talked about. And in our new footprint of our elementary schools, we had all these amazing pods. When the safety and security requirements came into place, a lot of how that was envisioned to look changed dramatically. So tell me, is our design, is it thinking of the new safety and security requirements? Or is it, we're building a lot of fun stuff in here that we're not going to be able to use?
No, we're definitely concerned with safety and security. We've had many discussions about how we've got to make it very flexible from their classrooms to the learning spaces outside and the learning areas also. And so we're looking at possibly different avenues to secure neighborhoods altogether instead of by classroom. That way, the flexibility is within your pod and not per classroom.
And then to build on that, and then Erin gets to go next, sorry, playing the button game. And so if you follow that arc along the top where the learning pod labels are, those would be individually fenced play areas that you only have access to from within your, in your pod. I, myself, beautifully timed project, I have a four-year-old special needs kiddo who isn't a loper, so I love that we're considering the fencing here. Also, up to the top to answer the shade question, and so to the right of where the glazing is, there's a gray, there's a white area that has a dash lined around it, that's the learning porch that I talked about, that will be covered and shaded, that's where the sinks will be, and some play elements under there. What is not shown on here, just, we had to get this to you guys like two weeks ago, you'd be amazed at the progress we've made in two weeks, but we just got in front of this team the other day to show some potential concepts for exterior design, and shading is going to be permanently along a good stretch of that, but then we've also been talking about shade canopy options for those areas that are not directly underneath that shading. So it is being thoughtful and mindful, not just shading over play areas, but as we're transitioning from this space to this space, making sure there is a clean pathway to go underneath, not just from sun, but for also inclement weather.
I had one more question, right on this slide, right here, number 26. You see where it says admin, admin, and has special, special education? Is that a playground? What is that? Is that a space? It's shaded like a playground, that's what I wanted to ask.
So the light blue there that says special ed?
Yeah, right there.
So we needed to find a place, so that's not a playground. No, those are actually offices, because we do feel that we need a full evaluation team on this campus and child find. So those spaces very close to parents as teachers, so when families come for evaluation, they also have the parents as teachers space, and we can change the spaces as needed.
I love that.
Thought you would.
I think there is a playground there that's for parents as teachers with an outdoor porch there.
Yes, right, right. And then also, again, if the district decides to have a CDC, because of licensing, those children cannot be on the playground with everybody else. So, again, with the fourth thinking design, there are possible places where everybody can play, and we would still be keeping everybody safe.
Just for clarity, can you just describe what we mean by Child Development Center?
Of course. So, well, like I said, right now, what we do is we offer free childcare to our teen parents, right, that are enrolled in school. That is at, right now, it's housed at Head Start. However, as we grow, and as Head Start has to continue also serving the rest of Leander ISD community, we may need to find a space where we can offer, as a district, a Child Development Center. So if we're going to offer childcare to children six months and up possibly, then we have to have an area where that could be licensed, right? Away from the rest of the kids, any type of public space. And then also, possibly looking at, is there anything we could offer as far as tuition base, right? Or childcare to employees in the district? So right now, we're just exploring that, I want to be very clear about that, finding out what that could look like. But we have a potential space if this is where we want to start. So we would be looking at a couple of rooms, each with infants, one-year-olds, two-year-olds, and then as children turn three, could there be tuition-based pre-K? So they join the other threes in the building and the other fours in the building.
Oh, I have a question. So regarding the finishes in the building, or just the, yes, the cost of the building, just checking that you're balancing the environment, excuse me, the savings that you talk about from, say, efficiency, from the utilities perspective, with durability and all of those, because many times they look really pretty, and so we just want to make sure that we're being very wise. with how we're coming, spending those dollars.
Definitely. We're, we're definitely keeping all the costs in considerations and the long, I mean, it's like any building, if we had perfect, it'd be a maintenance-free building. Because what we can save in having to maintain or pay more utilities just makes more money available for the classroom. And so that's where we, you know, we try to balance that, try to get as much as we can in where it makes sense. And, but it's got to be durable. I mean, you're going to have 600 little ones. And so it will be tested.
Thank you.
Can, can we also thank Anna and Francesca? I mean, board meetings, we've got so many other additional meetings we go to. And I thank Anna and Francesca for being a part of the design charrette. Appreciate, appreciate, appreciate board members. And I know y'all do take extra meetings on for everybody, but I think this is a good time to call out Anna and Francesca's extra work. So thank you group and for the parents and for all the staff. I think it's a lot of good work for our community.
Anna and Francesca have been dying for this presentation and telling me how excited we were going to be to see this. And, and, and that was accurate. So yes, thank you for just all the community engagement. And yeah, we were talking about, we need these all over the district, so yeah, let's talk about that. I know, I'm just kidding. One at a time, one at a time. But it's like, who wouldn't want to have their little one there? That's so exciting. All right. Well, thank you. And we are going to move over to 9C2, which is consider approval of the Texas facility standard requirement for ECC.
Thank you. I was just going to real quickly say that, you know, the state did change the requirements for school districts in 2021. And they adopted new facility standards. And so this is just new requirement that we have to do. And now that we've gone through the shred, it was, we're able to complete the packet and get it approved now.
I move that the board approve the long-range facility master plan and educational specifications for the early childhood center.
I second.
Anna makes motion, Francesca seconds. Is there any additional discussion? No. All those in favor? Seven in favor, motion passes. Thank you all.
Thank you. I do want to, real quick, thanks Erin and her team, Sarah and Erica. When we had this charrette, one thing we talked about is the charrette's success is based on the input and people participating. And they're so passionate about this facility that it really makes the design shred and design a lot easier because they know what is needed. And so I want to thank them for, keep it up.
All right, we're still jumping around a little bit and we have guests tonight. So right now, we're going to make another order change and we're moving over to 9B1. And this is consider approval of the internal audit risk assessment report.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Gearing. Tonight, we are here with Gibson and Consulting. We have Greg Gibson behind me, we have Kent Ingram to my right, and he is our liaison. He'll be walking you through a presentation. And we also have Ms. Gretchen Stibich as available virtual for the Q and A portion at the end. If there are any specific questions at the end of the presentation. Just a quick reminder, in February of 2023, the board approved outsourcing of the internal audit function. In September, they approved Gibson Consulting to take on that role. Tonight, they are here to provide you with a report on their internal audit review of their matrix. And then they will also, we have a list afterwards, we are asking the board to approve the assessment report and the proposed sequence of internal audit activities. So I will now let Kent carry on with, with, with the presentation. There will be a Q and A at the end afterwards.
Thank you, Pete. Now let's wait for this slide. Good evening, trustees, Dr. Gearing, thank you for having us here tonight. Very excited to present the results of our risk assessment as the next step to launch our internal audit program with the support of the Board of Trustees, the Audit Committee and Administration here at Leander ISD. Before we started, I really wanted to thank Pete Poppy and Dr. Grissom for serving as our project liaisons for this work. That's a really important role that involves wrangling a lot of data, a lot of people for interviews. And it just takes a lot of effort. So I wanted to thank them for diligently performing that task. We have a brief, we have a brief presentation prepared for you this evening. And I will say that was a really tough presentation to follow. I hope you're all as excited about internal audit as you are about a, a early education center. We will see. And here's our agenda listed. Our team for this work included myself as the project director, Gretchen Stibich, who is our consulting analyst. Ali Tylon, not listed, also provided a role. Greg Gibson, who is present, served in a quality assurance capacity. What I want to point out too on this slide is that though a risk assessment is valuable for determining what sequence to do audits, there's also a requirement of internal audit standards that won't be performed to inform an audit plan. So we needed to do this first, but it also provides good oversight and options and guidance for the board. We'd like to reiterate this point multiple times, anytime we can, this was not an audit. We did not do nearly enough work in any detail. We did not do transaction testing or in-depth process analysis or look into compliance findings, anything like that. So we did not have findings and recommendations in our report. The ranking of areas is just an assessment of risk. It is not saying this is not an effective area or this is a non-compliant area. It's just where risk is higher relative to other areas. That's relevant for that third bullet point. What we present in the report may or may not reflect actual problems or best practices. We have not done nearly enough work to come to that conclusion. So why do we do this? Like I mentioned, it is a requirement, but also is to determine what should we audit first? We want to equip the board with some information to determine with limited resources, both financial and also staff time, what should we prioritize? We evaluated 26 odd areas, which we include on a subsequent slide. After this evaluation, we assigned scores based on our risk scoring model and then ranked those areas. This ranking and some other factors drove our proposed sequencing of internal audits that we include in this deck and also in the full report. Our approach included multiple steps. We requested and analyzed a whole lot of data. That's where Pete and Sarah were very helpful. We also did our external research, reviewing board minutes, board meetings, article searches. We conducted interviews with the Board of Trustees and LISD staff. In total, we spoke with 51 individuals during the course of this project. We then performed the risk scoring of each area, which we include on the next slide. So this is what we defined as the LISD audit universe. Only thing I'll point out here is that it encompasses administrative, operational and programmatic areas. Nothing is really off limits for internal audit. This is, this program's under the direction of the board and kind of delegated duty to the board audit committee. So even if something is not included on this list, it could be a more discreet program that's period up to the board's direction to say, we want to audit that instead. Included are nine risk factors that we assessed in this audit area. These don't just include financial risks or inefficiency risk, but also look at potential for litigation, negative public sentiment and the risk of just not meeting our objectives or goals for our various audit areas. We applied weights to reflect the significance of a risk factor relative to others. So an example of that would be the risk of fraud was weighted higher than the risk of inefficiency, for example, of a impact of what could go wrong. We then applied other weights to account for the significance of areas over others. We define that as kind of budgetary impact or personnel impact. We then scored the inherent risk and district-specific risk of each risk factor within each of those 26 areas. Certain areas have higher inherent risk than others. There's really nothing the district can do about this. This is the cost of doing business. So where we spent most of our time is on that district-specific risk. That's where we account for all the great internal controls, processes and procedures in place within our audit areas. After we applied those scores, we then calculated a weighted score and then converted it to a hundred-point scale to arrive at our final risk scoring. The scoring does determine our prioritization of internal audit activities, but this is not necessarily the order which audits will be done. The board can always direct the internal audit program based on new information or events that may occur during the year. We expect that and appreciate that. We will also be following up throughout the year to keep apprised of how the risk profile is changing in LISD. But we just like to reiterate again that the order does not necessarily specify when the board will decide to do work. We did note a few themes, oh, sorry, we did note a few themes in this audit. There was leadership turnover in many areas. We like to say, though, this is not a statement on the competency of these new individuals at all. There is just risk associated whenever new leadership comes in, makes changes. There could be a drop-off in processes or a slight change in quality. We also noted some manual processes and review controls in place. We did learn during interviews, there are some district efforts to introduce new systems, to introduce automation, but there's still pockets where it is highly manual processing. The final theme we saw, there are great examples of documented procedures and training in areas, but it's not a system-wide process. There are still areas where we're relying heavily on institutional knowledge, which does put the district at risk if key individuals were to leave. We include the result of our risk assessment here. This is also included in your final report. Highest scored area was construction management. Lowest scored area was co-curricular activities. I told the Audit Committee when I presented this to them, I just wanted to reiterate to the full board that the risk range is quite narrow compared to some of the other risk assessments we've done. So from highest to lowest, it kind of indicates that coming in here, we saw great examples of internal controls, a good control environment. Again, just because something is ranked highest does not mean it's not effective or efficient. There's just, the risk of that is greater. Many times, the top five areas would have scores well into the 90s on our model. The only score in the 90s here was your top-rated area. So I just wanted to make sure that y'all knew that this was a, a good outcome of a risk assessment. Next few slides include our observations on the top five scored areas. Our full report goes into these observations, more of them for the top 10. In interest of time, I just wanted to cover the top five with you tonight. Construction management received our highest score. Risk of fraud is high inherently in this due to some kind of industry malfeasance that can occur. Not to say this has happened at all in Leander ISD, but there is just inherent risk of that. The department has key controls in place for mitigating that risk though, such as a good process for reviewing pay applications. For the risk of non-compliance, a lack of internal audit history kind of drives that risk. Sticking with construction management, there's been substantial turnover of PMs in the last couple of years. Like I said before, this does not mean they're not competent, but just with this turnover, that does increase risk to the department. Increases the risk of processing falling off when new people come on. Our second highest area was human resources. The risk of inaccurate data has a very high inherent risk in this area. Tracking a position data is complex. There's a lot of very important information housed and maintained by HR, which increases inherent risk. Specific to LISD, there is a potential for inaccuracies due to reliance on paper-based personnel files. No other concerns though were noted in this domain for HR. The risk of inefficiency is high and very high in HR. That's largely due to that paper-based system of personnel files. And then inherently, there's just a lot of pressure right now on HR departments to expediently identify, onboard, train, retain staff. And so you need really efficient processes to do that, to make sure we don't lose key candidates to other opportunities. Our third area is academic program management. So this is kind of the bread and butter of the district, you know, general education delivery and instruction. Inherent risk of this will always be very high of inaccurate data and reporting due to the sheer volume of data that drives accountability. Ratings for the district are, are result heavily from this area. Specific to LISD, there was a data reporting mistake of economically disadvantaged students. District is on top of that, developed an internal improvement plan to make sure it didn't happen again. That was something we felt we needed to note and would feed into a higher risk score. In interviews, we learned there's a potential duplication of efforts and inconsistencies in how data is collected during observations and walkthroughs. There is a good training program in place, but as described as campuses can kind of develop their own means for getting that data. And so we just think there could be maybe some opportunities to tighten up there. Sticking with this area, this was another function that experienced high turnover of central leadership and also campus administration. That can really create challenges with meeting goals and objectives and change management whenever central wants to push something through to campuses. This was also an area where we saw a potential over-reliance on institutional knowledge and a lack of succession planning in the department if key individuals were to leave. Our third area was special education. Non-compliance risk is very high, likely for obvious reasons, highly regulated by federal and state law. District-specific here was moderate. There are some potential training gaps due to high turnover. But also specifically to LISD, the district was out of compliance with the performance indicator for timely evaluations in 2022, 23. Failing to meet objectives is a high inherent risk in this area. Not meeting IEP goals is incredibly detrimental to special education students, of course. And so we need to make sure that our district has good processes and procedures to make sure that that risk is mitigated. And LISD specifically, we feel that is mitigated, there's a risk of moderate here for the district. There were performance level indicators in the previous three years across all subject areas. That's what really drove our decision for it to be moderate. There were other controls in place that kind of mitigated, but we wanted to say that, that PL level does indicate some potential opportunities for improvement in this bed program. Final area to cover tonight is our facilities operations or management. Risk of inaccurate data inherently is low because there's not a lot of requirements for data out of this group. However, the manual work order system in place can lead to data inaccuracies and make it more difficult to address discrepancies when they come up. Related to that, department's in the process of implementing a new work order system. With this comes risks of kind of data migration, user adoption risks, all which could result in inaccurate data or bad reporting if it's not configured correctly. Failing to meet program, program goals or objectives is high here inherently, especially due if you have ineffective equipment or machinery, dilapidated buildings and facilities. That can really negatively impact multiple areas of the district, multiple other audit areas and goals. Specific to LISD, one of the factors Specific to LISD, one of the factors we pointed out is formal goals for monitoring effectiveness and efficiency does not currently exist. There's a potential for this to be mitigated by this new kind of work order system for the facility and maintenance side, but again, that's early stages. We thought that that was a big enough gap to rate this as a very high risk. Final slide for you tonight includes our proposed sequence of internal audits. We included comments, too, to discuss why an audit may not particularly align to its risk ranking. Great example is federal programs. That was our ninth scored area. However, we recommend doing that next year with the lower estimated level of effort for audit completion. So, for next year, recommending a construction management audit, a human resources audit, and an audit of federal programs. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
This is more of a comment, I guess. In 2021, I started as the internal audit liaison when we had it internal. And I'm just grateful that our board members just, you know, were like, I wanted to see what would be like if we went outside. But, most importantly, not because, you know, negative stuff to our old internal auditor, but more, how can we improve our systems and processes here? And I just, I think, I just am so grateful for this board because they, they took a chance because this is the first time we've done an outside internal audit for this board. And it has been a journey. Like I said, 2021 is when we started this, and now we're here. And to see it here, one, it just makes me incredibly happy to work with the board members that I'm with because they recognized, you know, we've, we've changed a lot in Leander ISD, right? And it's time for us to try to figure out how can we better improve our systems and processes so we can give every student the opportunity they need. So, I guess this is just thank you, board members, for going down this journey and for realizing what we need to do to make our district better. So, that's just the comment there. And thank y'all for dealing with all of us, because I know I've been very lively with y'all. But, that, that's all I wanted to say was thank you, board members, for going down that journey and really recognizing the need here.
I just want to add on, I'm really excited about this. You know, I, it is exciting. I know audit is like, really is that exciting? I think over the past few years, there's different areas that we wanted to go down that path of audit, but needing to have experts in that area. And that's when, you know, when Anna became that liaison, we were limited with expertise, right? When, when you're internal. And really, what's the best way to do an audit but have an external group come in? And having experts in, in building, in special education, in technology, where we wouldn't have to hire all of these experts? But, you know, being able to look at a risk assessment and really choose the areas that we think are, you know, most relevant for us without the limitation of we don't have staff that are experts in, in this area or this area. So, this is able, this allows us to look at this and not be limited by that. So, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
I also want to thank Anna and Chave, and now Gloria, because Gloria took my place on the committee. I know there's an extra meeting there, too, for you, Gloria. I realize trustees, y'all still have extra meetings, of course, but I appreciate the time and the work that y'all put into it to get us here to this point.
Just wanted to say thanks for this initial report. It was very exciting to see what you've been able to just have a window into just for the few months that you were able to interview all these people. And I'm looking forward to us being able to leverage both your expertise in digging deep into these areas, but also the benefit of you also auditing different school districts and really coming back with best practices because you've been able to see how things have been able to turn around and be more efficient.
I have a question on the order of the, on the proposed sequencing. Would it be, I guess, prudent to move the academic program management up sooner? Because to me, that's, like you said, that's what we're doing here all the time. So, if this assessment is saying there's a risk there, and maybe that's a board question, I would just want to switch the academic program management up to 24, 25, and maybe switch it out with one of the other three. Because, I mean, federal programs wasn't even on the top five that you talked about. So, I know it says it's, because it would be faster, but with all the changes that are already happening in our academics, I don't know, maybe that's a question for the board and Dr. Garing, if we feel that maybe moving that academic program management up might be better.
I think first it'll be helpful if you explain what academic program management is, what the type of scope to expect from it, and then we can go.
Yeah, so, that is probably our largest audit that we do because it involves multiple classroom observations, interviews with pretty much all of your central academic leadership, surveys. It's kind of, let's say, like Rolls-Royce of internal audits that we do. So, that one would take about, I think, eight months to complete and would be, from a budgetary standpoint, quite, quite large. So, that's, that's why we, just doing this, I kind of try to think and put myself in your shoes as to what would be your audit appetite for a year. That's absolutely your board's decision, though. If it's something when you talk about, and, you know, we're happy to provide kind of written summaries of what these audits would entail to inform some of your discussions around what to do next year. That, that was kind of what drove not including that and swapping out with federal programs. That was a little more targeted than academic program management audit.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that would be helpful to have the list of exactly how long each of these would take, and like you're saying, for the budgetary reasons, just for me, especially because it's going to take that long, I would think about moving it up, but.
Also, the things that we had talked about was whether it involves going into the curriculum itself or curriculum deficit, and can you explain how that might or might not be part of this?
Yes, this is not a curriculum audit. So, we're not going in and looking at, you know, how this maps to TEACs or standards, and is it, is the curriculum itself best practice? This is the delivery of the curriculum. Are there processes in place to ensure consistent delivery, campus to campus, class to class? That'd be an example of one of the processes we'd look, we'd look at in this audit. So, this is not a curriculum assessment.
So, we just talked about how much we appreciate, but also, this is a new process. So, there's part of this where I have questions, as always, but I want to also defer to the committee who churns through a lot of that. So, I am also kind of struggling of like, okay, really, how much has, because I don't necessarily know, how much or where do the committee churn to? And then where does our board come in? Because I don't want to redo the conversations and the work that the committee already did. One, we want to be, honor the time. We also want to honor the work the committee did. Part of me is, I asked Pete Pape, some of these that have already been audited, like, what were the areas that we've already spent money on? What are the areas that we've already audited? So, I had an understanding, and it would help me understand, like, okay, are you, as a board, are we wanting to redo something? I get a governance has a bit of a different flavor, but if we already had two or one audit in a department, to do ours right on top of it, makes me think, oh, why wouldn't we wait a bit? Again, I'm thinking, well, then maybe that's committee work. So, I'm still trying to figure out how best to support the committee and not redo their work, but I absolutely agree with Francesca. So much we talk about is our system is so beautifully stable, and we want to see some big changes happen. And to me, it seems like, I don't know if I would, I have questions, but I'm like, I think the committee's probably had questions, so I'm gonna not ask all those. I'm thinking, though, academic programs, I'd put that up first, and then all the others would fall underneath it as the process goes. So, it's, I do agree with Francesca, the academic program, I get it, it's not curriculum TEACs, but it sounds to me like a lot of this is doing that instructional and how that instruction's delivered, so.
So, we, thank you for mentioning that. What we looked at and what we discussed was the amount of hours to complete all of these, right? And looking at capacity of everyone involved and also cost of, per year. Some of the other things we thought about are in, Pete talked about, in areas that they are making changes and making adjustments to right now, or we've had significant changes in leadership, and that's changing a lot of that process, that right now might not be the best time to audit in that area because of that. And so, these were ranked in this way with all of those things being considered.
I also want to add for the academic program management, right, on slide 18. It's talking about staff members. We know that we have that staff audit. I'm not going to say it right, but the staff audit that Pete's department is doing, and I know that this conversation was kind of put on there to know, like, this information could change because we're about to get some new information when the ball from that audit. That was not board-driven, just going to throw that out there.
And for the committee or for our audit people, we talked about, I talked to Pete about some of the audits that have already taken place. Human resources, when I see it up here, I think that's great. We've talked about that as a board, but I also know Pete's department, like, they have undergone and are in the process of doing some things. So, I'm concerned, are we definitely sure this is not going to be duplicative? Or, is it the right timing considering the office just got done doing? I just want to make sure we use our money as wisely as we can. Every little penny's going to matter.
So, I'll, I'll speak. We, we reviewed the scopes of work for those current audit activities that were going on. I think we sent an email to the audit committee that kind of outlined what that scope covers and what our typical scope covers. And every instance, the administration one was certainly valuable. It was more targeted, and it would potentially overlap in maybe one area that we would include in a human resources audit, but it would not touch multiple areas that we would go into. And so, what we would do during scoping is we would have that scoping conversation with the audit committee, Dr. Garing or whoever he, you know, delegates to, to talk those through, right, before we go off. And we don't want to duplicate effort ever. And so, we'd be very intentional to make sure that didn't happen. But, that was considered in this risk assessment, the additional work.
And I think the, for the construction management, we talked about because the bond projects are ongoing right now, and it's a lot of them, that it's pretty timely and time-sensitive to get it done while the big dollars are being spent.
As the committee keeps looking, and I know, I'm guessing, that these rank orders may change as we start moving through the year and we start moving through the process. So, as you look at special education, facilities, management, I'm, I'll be curious of how that goes to make sure that special education also takes into account the audit we just finished there. I'm sure committee is going to get all into that and make sure scoping is appropriate for that. I'd like to ask the audit committee to continue with two things, and that way, I've just asked it, I know y'all are going to do it, but one is when we, when we changed from an internal to an external audit, we kind of changed some of the housing of where things are. So, Pete's office now does some of the things that y'all would not do. And we need things like monitoring that anonymous tip line. And so, I'd just like to make sure the committee, make sure we have the proper staffing to keep Pete's office so we, we have that balance. And the other one is just to continue to keep an eye on the, the audits that have already done as a scoping. It just helps to know, like, y'all already done that. And the fa, uh, final one is, as an internal audit, we used to have more campuses audited, and y'all aren't recommending campus audits. I'm just curious, why not? Or, is that, is that okay that we're not doing that? Or, have we left an area that's open and now we need to go figure out a way to seal that up?
So, for a good number of our program clients, they would do those campus audits through finance. They, they would have a position that would do that. We have found that to be likely a more cost-effective method for the district to continue to do those campus audits. We are more than qualified and capable to do those, but that's been a, a good middle ground that our other clients have used.
Yeah, so, that sounds like then, again, finance. So, I just ask the committee to continue to look at that and make sure our finance office is doing whatever, as y'all are doing the work, is, and if we need funding or something, please let us, the board, know. Thank you, committee, for your work.
Yeah, we had that discussion, and Pete's office is going to handle those areas.
I move to approve the internal audit risk assessment report, a proposed sequence of internal audit activities as presented by Gibson Consulting.
I second.
Anna makes motion. Chave seconds. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor? Seven in favor. Motion passes. Thank y'all very much.
Thank y'all.
We're going to take a 10-minute break.
I move the board approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I second.
Anna makes motion, Christine seconds. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor? Six in favor, motion passes. Okay, next, we're going to move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. All right, any guesses as to where this picture might have been taken or what this relates to?
Heysel.
Heysel, of course. Heysel Hounds.
Oh.
Very good. That was your test, you passed. Quickly about empowered staff. You know, people say that teachers only work part of the year, but a lot of our teachers have been back and doing lots of learning during the summertime. And so this is just one of those workshops, working on edu protocols. When our teachers come together, they're working really collaboratively. They're modeling the learning environments that we want to see and create for our own students. And so very excited about the work that they're doing as they do their professional learning through the summer. Talking about our empowered learners, one of the things that we want to remind you about is that we do do summer feeding throughout the district. And that's an opportunity for our kids from the community to come in and get the meals that they need, the nutrition that they need, but also to spend some time together and do some learning, so. I missed one. Oh, there we go. There we go. You've seen this picture multiple times tonight already, but just the focus and intensity of our students in everything that they do is just incredible, what they can do. And I just think it's really special that we still have namesakes in our district to support at every level. We've seen Mr. Rouse multiple times this year at different events, and just great to have him in the picture all the time. So we thank Mr. Rouse for always supporting Leander ISD. This is Heysel Elementary School, and so we've been watching as it's really risen out of the dirt and is now almost ready for our students. Here you can see the interactive panels that are on the walls as well as the design of those classrooms. The color schemes are in, the collaborative spaces are looking good. Playground is done. We are waiting on the turf, the grass, because we're working with the city of Leander to make sure that we time that correctly for water restrictions and things like that. Cafeteria is looking really good, as well as the MPR. This is one of the unique designs of Heysel Elementary. This is the entrance, actually, and sort of has this high vaulted ceiling. Just wanted to make sure to point that out. And of course, our media center. But of course, the building is only as good as the humans that are inside that building. And so, so excited about the team that's going out there, that's going to lead the learning for our students. And of course, it's all about our kids. All right, be happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you. We are going to move over to, actually, so on our agenda, we have item 9A1, which is discussion of the LISD strategic plan. We're going to move that to another board meeting. We want to give ourselves a lot more time to really dive into that deeper, so that will be on an upcoming board meeting. And so now, we're going to move over to, no, you're, now, we're going to move over to 9B2, which is consider approval of a resolution nominating individual to the Williamson County Appraisal District Board of Directors. And I think Dr. Pete's going to take us through this.
All right, good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Gearing. Tonight, as you recall, with the state legislature in the last session, they added three positions to be added to each of the central appraisal districts throughout the state of Texas. In the Williamson County Appraisal District, there were three individuals that ran. Two of those were current board members, so now we have a vacancy. We did have two individuals that submitted their applications. Along with their resumes, that information was given to the Board of Trustees. If there are any questions, we'll leave it up to the board to nominate, but I'll just know that we do have all the information from the candidates. Checked, both candidates do not have any delinquent taxes. Both candidates paid taxes for LISD, reside in their home, and filled out the questionnaire that they are qualified, and so everything checks out, so.
Madam President, I move the Board of Trustees approve the resolution nominating an individual to the Williamson County Approval District, WCAD, Board of Directors. Is it Approval District or Appraisal District?
Appraisal.
Yeah. I'm going to read this motion the way it should be and correct the spelling error.
Thank you.
I move the Board of Trustees approve the resolution nominating an individual to the Williamson County Appraisal District, WCAD, Board of Directors, indicating a nomination for Sunny Fox.
I second. Trish makes motion, Anna seconds. Is there any further discussion?
I just have a comment. And so I did review the applications that came in, and it's good that we did get some two very strong, very qualified candidates. And I think either of them is suitable. I just wanted to say that I just hope that someday, as we have these opportunities, who knows? I don't know when next another opportunity would come around if and when it does. But I'm just hoping that we can give an opportunity to people who traditionally haven't had opportunities before.
Any further comments? If there are no further comments, all those in favor? Six in favor? Any opposed? One opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're going to move over to item 9B3, which is discussion and consider approval of nomination for the Region 13, Position C, Tasby Board of Directors.
All right, so, am I correct? This is the time I can make the nomination? So I move the board nominate Brian Hall-Ubeck for Region 13, Position C, seat on the Tasby Board of Directors.
I second.
Trish makes a motion, Anna seconds. Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Six in favor? Any opposed? Next, we're moving over to 9C3, which is discussion of a district-wide intruder detection audit report finding.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees, Dr. Gearing. So I'm here to report, we had an additional finding in our state intruder audit. So as you know, when we do these, I have a lovely script that I will read to you that outlines that, and then we will talk further in closed. So, safety and security of our students and staff is our top priority. Beginning in September of this year, TEA has conducted 47. All of our campuses have had intruder detection audits. The audits test whether a campus is accessible to an unauthorized individual. The audits seek to help districts identify how campuses can improve student safety, such as ensuring exterior doors are locked and providing an opportunity to create a safer learning environment. Of the 47 audits done in the 23-24 school year, we had eight state findings, seven I've previously reported on. With any state finding, all staff at the campus are retrained to ensure all exterior doors are locked and closed, and any mechanical repairs needed are completed. We acknowledge that parents and community members are interested in the details of the audit results. However, it's in the best interest of our students and staff that we do not share this information with the board, with the broader public, as it could lead to compromising important campus security information. During this evening closed session, I will discuss specific detail, details of the intruder detection audit findings. The intruder detection audits are one of the many actions we take to ensure our schools are safe. With safety as our top priority, we know that this work does not end, and we commend our campuses for their diligence in keeping our students and staff safe.
Thank you. All right, we're moving along. 9C4, our business and finance monthly reports. Dr. Pete, just back and forth all night.
I'm getting my steps. All right, Madam President, members of Board of Trustees, Dr. Gearing, we do have our monthly reports. The first one is our bond report. I don't have any additional comments on, on, nothing out of the ordinary in the bond report. Same thing with the finance report, just a couple of notes on the investment report. Just report that we earned $2 million in the general operating and interest for that month, 1.9 million in the debt service fund, and approximately $900,000 in our capital projects funds. And then our tax collection report, our tax collections are down points 4.7% over prior year. And just want to clarify a little bit on that. The law changed about a year or two ago, where individuals can, used to be you have to wait until January to submit your home set exemption, now you can do it at any, any time, and so when that occurs, that gets refunded, and so that will, that's, our refunds are a little higher, and our refunds, they get offset to the delinquent account, so it makes our collection a little bit lower. TEA does, we do file, TEA does reimburse, we not, we don't lose funding on that, but when you look at the reports or tax collections, it will look a little lower. So that's, kind of explains why we're, we've been down about between a quarter and a half of percent in the last year or two, and that's because, the main reason is that law change. But other than that, for the month reports, I don't have any other comments unless you have any questions on those. On the disco, okay, keep going, sorry, edit, sorry. On the budget, the budget projections, I just want to, just update, we are forecasting the 2023-24 budget. Revenues to be less than expenditures to the tune of $5.2 million. Just reiterate, 2 million of that is the, we transferred out for the empowerment fund, and 2.2, 2.3 million of that was for the science kits, that we did not have the funds from the instructional materials allotment. So, in theory, without those two budget amendments, we would be 1 million of revenues under expenditures, and then we do, just bring to your reminder, we did lose $7 million in Shar's funding for the year. So, all said, all being said, we were actually, we're in fairly good shape. No one saw 7 million being taken from us during this year, but, but that's where we're, where our forecast is for the end of the fiscal year, as of June 30, or going to June 30. Are there any questions or comments on?
I have a quick comment. So we had a lot of discussion, and I'm thinking of how to put all my questions in very short, succinct points, and this is one of them, in that we talk a lot about staffing in here. And one of the things we had a conversation about was, we sometimes talk about how we're lean and mean in our administration of staffing. My question is, though, are we lean and mean, or just lean and way too skinny, where we're not supporting our staff the way they need to be supported? And certainly, I understand, I think your quote was, we're about 7 million under what the state average is for administration. I want to keep our administration where it needs to be, I don't want it to be overinflated, but I also don't want to see us underinflate so much that we're not supporting our staff, our teachers, and our campus. So, I appreciate the savings in payroll, but just heads up, I want to keep making sure I understand from you how this balance works. So, not tonight, just heads up.
No, and just, I won't go lengthy detail, but that is what we are in the process of defining, is exactly where is that right balance between what support comes from the district and what staff is needed to provide that support to the campuses and through our, in our community, and what positions need to be on campuses. And that's, we're in that early stages of that process, but, great point.
No further questions, you can move to the next one.
Okay, final amendment. This is the last one, until next month. But, last one for this fiscal year, no, or actually, it'll be August, because we don't have one July, but. We had one on the final budget amendment, we are increasing revenues and expenditures in the general fund, nothing really changing on the bottom line. The child nutrition fund, we are increasing revenues, just more accurately reflect the revenues that exceeded the budget, and increasing two areas of expenditures. We do expect the fund balance there to increase approximately, I believe it's 1 million, 1.1 million, and then the debt service fund. Whenever we do a bond refunding, we have to book some entries that don't affect necessarily cash per se, but they just, they go on the transfer in, transfer out, other resources, just, and that's what those entries are for. They don't really have a bottom line effect on the fund, but historically, we still come to the board and do a budget amendment, even though legally, on the function 00, the auditors don't really look at those, but just to be transparent and in honor of the, we've historically always done it, that's what we brought that to you tonight for the debt service fund.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the final budget amendment for the general operating child nutrition and debt service funds for the 2023-2024 as presented.
I second.
Anna makes motion, Francesca seconds. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor? Seven in favor, motion passes.
All right, our next item is just a minor adjustment, if you will, just to make sure that we are all on board on what the assumptions of the budget. We did change a couple, and I wanted to just have them approved by the board prior to the final adoption of the budget this evening. You know, we started out the year with an assumption of a 2% compensation increase, the board did approve, a 2.5% in May, which the board approved it, that's fine, but we did, I did just want to put that in the memo as far as the assumption. The property values were at 7%, we came in at 7.46%, and then we did originally start with budgeting for 98% of the payroll, and we did decrease that to 97.5%. Those are the only changes that we have to the budget assumptions. Just to be clear, clear and transparent on that, I wanted to bring that to the board tonight for your approval prior to the approval of the budget adoption.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the 2024-2025 budget assumptions and parameters used in preparing the 2024-2025 general fund budget as presented.
I second.
Anna makes motion, Francesca seconds. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor? Seven in favor, motion passes.
All right, and as I continue the build of the final budget adoption, adoption, the next item on the agenda is, in order to be in compliance with House Bill 5, school districts before they adopt their budget, or when they adopt their budget, they need to ensure that monies have been set aside for any student who didn't pass a state exam, or, or at risk, or things of that nature. Typically, your comp ed funds, so just for clarification purposes, the district has set aside $315,091 to help ensure any of our students who did not pass or need additional help to make sure that that help is available to those students. Of course, if that money is not enough, we will definitely find more monies available, but we have, do have money set aside and to be in compliance with House Bill 5.
I move the Board of Trustees approve $315,091 of the 2024-2025 proposed budget to be utilized for additional accelerated instruction in the 2024-2025 school year to comply with the requirements of HB5 from the 83rd legislative session.
Second. Christine makes motion, Shaday seconds. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor? Seven in favor, motion passes.
And here we are, we are at the climatic event here of the, of the budget, seven-month budget adoption process, but we did give a public hearing, a presentation that was done earlier this evening. If there are any questions on that, or any clarifications on the budget, we're happy to answer those, but if not, recommend is approve the budget as presented, if.
So Pete, we talked on the phone, so I'm not going to restate them all here, but two things that came out of those conversations was, you know, just the desire to make sure that as a board and community, we understand how this budget ties into the strategies and the strategic plan. And then the other thing, not for this budget, but in the future, I'd like to consider and discuss, how do we appropriately recognize staff? I know TIA has been a lot of discussion, but when I've heard about it in conference, and I'm looking into the details, it's not sounding like something that matches our district, I'm not sure. So I'd like to, as we start building our next budget, have that discussion. And finally, I'd also like to know, what does a zero-based, as you and I talked about, for departments? Francesca and I sat in on a budget discussion, and zero-based budgeting was talked about, and we had talked about, maybe when you start a new strategic plan, that's a good time to do that. And so those are my three takeaways from this budget process. I'd also like to say, I think your staff is amazing. I have called, they have been responsive, you, I ask questions, I have questions all the time, and they're, they're getting information, you're getting information, all the stuff that you've walked through is just a huge testament to how amazing our budget department is to make sure that we can do the work that we keep talking about, which is taking care of our students in the classroom. So thank you and your staff.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, and we'll pass that along, and I know it means a lot to the staff, so.
I move that the Board of Trustees adopt the 2024-2025 general operating fund, child nutrition fund, and debt service fund budgets as presented.
I second.
Anna makes motion, Christine seconds. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor? Seven in favor, motion passes. It is 8:48 PM, and the board will now go into closed session for the purposes permitted by Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and/or attorney-client privileged matter, Texas Government Code 551.074, personnel deliberate, the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, and duties of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code 551.0821, deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed, Texas Government Code 551.089, discussion of district-wide intruder detection audit report findings, Texas Government Code 551.074, personnel administration reorganization, Texas Government Code 551.074, deliberation and consideration of employment of the chief operations officer. No action will be taken in closed session, any action related to closed session agenda items will be taken when the board returns to open session.[1342.88] to open session.
It is 9:33 and the board is returning to open session. Board members, do you have any motions related to closed session agenda items?
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of Jeremy Trimble for Chief Operations Officer, two-year probationary employment contract for personal additions as presented in accordance with the salary scale policies and contract of Leander Independent School District for the 2024-2025 school year.
Second?
Anna makes motion. Was that Trish second? Sorry, I just heard it from that end. Is there any further discussion? No discussion. All those in favor? Seven in favor. Motion passes. I'd like to thank and just give a lot of love to our outgoing COO, who has been... I'm excited. Very excited for Jeremy to come, and I hope he realizes he's got some really, really big shoes to step into because I very, very love Jimmy Distler. So, thank you. With that, that is our last motion. This meeting is adjourned.